We call to order the special meeting of the Planning Commission, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. I'll ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Anderson.
Here.
Badrick.
Here.
Broker.
Here.
Gardener.
Here.
Gaunt.
Here.
Lachey.
Present.
And Mans.
Here. Everyone should have in front of them a copy of the agenda for this special meeting. Is there any comments on the agenda?
So move.
Seeing none, so move to approve. Second by Anderson. Voice, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, seeing none, agenda is approved. Which moves us to the new business part for why we have the special meeting, which is the presentation of the Short Term Rental Task Force Report. And Ryan, I know you're online. Did you have anything you wanted to say before we turn it over to the Chair of the Short Term Rental Task Force, Holly Anderson, to give us that presentation?
I think actually.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, good. Um, well, thank you. Sorry, I'm not there in person with you this evening. I'm in Traverse City for the Michigan Municipal League Conference, but glad we have this technology option. So it's good to see you virtually. Um, uh, so I plan on doing the presentation this evening unless the Chair of the Task Force prefers to do it herself, so.
Fantastic. I didn't know who was doing it.
All yours, Mr. Cummins.
Yeah, although I would encourage her to certainly, or any of you, Mr. Chair, you were part of the Task Force as well. Feel free to chime in or add any additional detail as well this evening, so. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and pull this nation up. All right, make no one things are good on your own screen. Going up for you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go then. All right, well, again, good evening, everybody, and I'm really excited to kind of present to you the, uh, the work that the Short Term Rental Task Force did, uh, this year since, since May. Uh, we've covered a lot of territories, so a little bit of a lengthy presentation. I'm gonna kind of keep it high level on each section. Uh, we'll go into each of the recommendations, uh, so you're able to see each one of those. And then, uh, from here, we'll kind of discuss next steps and give folks kind of an opportunity to digest and and then go in to detail on the report and then kind of pick up the discussion next month. So I know the Planning Commission, you're certainly aware of this, but for folks that are, that are watching that may not, um, maybe realize how we got here. Um, back in January into February, the Planning Commission, um, met and discussed, um, I need, uh, or a recommendation to form a specific task force, uh, to take a look at various short-term rental, uh, concerns uh, and opportunities that, that they were hearing about from the community. And so, uh, the Planning Commission passed a resolution and sent it to the city council, and the city council, um, received that recommendation and concurred with the Planning Commission that indeed a, a short-term rental task force should be, uh, established and that that short-term rental task force should have the assistance and facilitation of a professional, professional planning firm, uh, to really take a holistic look at, um, short-term rentals and our current regulations and make some recommendations on potential changes. And so the task force was, uh, purpose was, is to identify and prioritize current short-term rental concerns, issues, opportunities, and objectives, uh, that were held by the residents, property, and business owners of the city, uh, schools, our public safety, uh, professionals, and then other community stakeholders. And so the task force was to gather, uh, data and resident property and business owner feedback in the form of forums and surveys. Uh, and then the task force was tasked with, uh, developing a balanced report and formulating, uh, a set of recommendations, which has brought us here, uh, this evening. And as a reminder for folks that, that may not be aware, uh, the, the goal of the, the Planning Commission and the city council was to, to have, um, kind of a, a balanced set of stakeholders, uh, serving on the, uh, task force. Um, uh, the task force was made up of, uh, one member, uh, from city council, uh, two members from the Planning Commission. Um, and then from there, it was kind of a, a balance of different stakeholders. Uh, the goal was to have a, a member from the retail restaurant or lodging business owner community, uh, somebody to represent, uh, short-term rental property managers. Uh, a member, uh, from a residential zoning district who maybe had a short-term rental or were, you know, had a pretty positive outlook on short-term rentals. Uh, a member from a, uh, commercial zoning district that, uh, did not own a short-term rental. Uh, a member from, uh, the real estate, the realtor community with no short-term rental ownership. Uh, and then, uh, finally, a, a member from a residential zoning district who really was having some concerns about how short-term rentals were maybe negatively impacting, uh, short-term rentals in their neighborhood. And so the Planning Commission Chair, um, Mayor and myself, um, evaluated a, a lot of applicants who expressed interest. Um, and then, uh, ultimately established a, a task force, uh, that, that comprised of, uh, these members. So the city, uh, council approved the hiring of, uh, Michigan Planning Firm, McKenna Associates, uh, largest planning firm in Michigan, in order to really aid and, and facilitation and in-depth data analysis pertaining to short-term rental, uh, objectives. And so, um, hired the planning firm and then in May, uh, the planning, or I'm sorry, the Short Term Rental Task Force, uh, got to work. Um, they held, uh, meetings twice a month, uh, and really dug in and, uh, reviewed a, a ton of analysis and data uh, and information that included, uh, you know, reviewing what other Michigan, Michigan communities were doing, what were their policies? How were they handling short-term rentals? They reviewed, uh, state-level data on housing markets and, and trends. Uh, the task force took a, a, a close look at what are our current city of Sagatuck ordinances? What are our current regulations and policies? How have we been handling enforcement? What have we done enforcement-wise in the past? The task force, uh, uh, looked at various sets of data, uh, that we had available from our assessor and from our, uh, kind of our, our zoning system. Uh, the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the task force did a, a, a lot of, of listening, uh, to public comments. Uh, during each of their meetings, there was two opportunities for folks to provide public comments. Uh, they also reviewed, uh, many letters, uh, that were submitted to them. And ultimately, the, the task force, uh, hosted a community-wide, uh, town hall, uh, and conducted, uh, an online public engagement survey. And so, uh, the next slides are gonna kind of just, at a very high level, kind of touch on, um, each of those, those topics and kind of key takeaways. Again, really encourage everybody that the full final task force report is actually in the Planning Commission's packet this evening. Really encourage everyone to kind of dive into the, the details. I'm just gonna stay, uh, high level, uh, tonight with key takeaways. So the task force looked at community comparisons. Again, what were other communities doing? How are other communities, uh, maybe that were similar or comparable, handling their short-term rental regulations? And so some key takeaways, uh, residency requirements. So each community, uh, that was reviewed had, um, some sort of, uh, property owner or designated agent that had to live within a certain distance, um, of the short-term rental property to be available to kind of respond and deal with, with issues. And so Sagatuck actually does have a regulation of, of that same sort. We require that somebody reside within, uh, forty-five miles. Uh, other communities, you know, had lesser of a distance, um, but each community at least had that, that sort of requirement. Uh, each community had, uh, at least some occupancy requirements. A lot of that was set by the, uh, kind of the building code, although there was one city in particular, Charlevoix, that actually kind of capped the number of occupants, uh, per short-term rental, uh, at ten. Uh, registration schedule, um, this is kind of, we're able to see a, a difference here between us and, and, uh, other communities. Uh, the city of Sagatuck, uh, we require that you register your short-term rental and renew that registration every three years. Uh, the other communities that we reviewed had a requirement that short-term rentals be re- uh, renewed and reregistered and re-inspected, uh, every, uh, every year. And then another common theme in looking at other communities was there was a, a tenant kind of code of conduct or what we might call a, a good neighbor policy, something that, um, the tenants were being provided where they were kind of being advised as they were coming into, you know, potentially a new community for them, you know, reminding them to be respectful related to noise, that they may be, you know, staying in a neighborhood, uh, what's the proper way to handle their trash disposal? Uh, just trying to kind of create cohesion with, with adjacent property owners that, that may be, um, you know, residing, uh, in a particular area. Kind of analysis, I'm sorry, McKenna Associates, uh, did a kind of a market analysis to kind of say, hey, you know, what, what is the, the market currently telling us? And, and I will know, and you see this at the bottom of the slide and, and, uh, you know, reasons for data trends are not always clear and correlation does not necessarily mean causation, so, so keep that in mind. But some key findings that, that McKenna, uh, Associates provided us. We're at the point where we're now processing about a hundred requests for short-term rental certificates each year. Um, doesn't mean they're necessarily brand-new short-term rentals. Um, could be a situation where the property changes, um, hands and, and there's a new owner. And so the new owner has to apply for a short-term rental certificate. Uh, or it could be a situation where, you know, somebody's three years is up and they're renewing and, and we have to, uh, evaluate, uh, that, that application for zoning compliance, uh, and then make sure that they get a, uh, updated fire department inspection. So that's an increase. So right around a hundred, or it's before twenty twenty, we're generally seeing around, uh, fifty or, or less, uh, per year. Uh, another key finding from McKenna Associates was the increase in interest in short-term rentals has been concurrent with the median sale price for homes in the city nearly doubling. So they're kind of seeing trend lines in short-term rentals going up as well as the median sales price. Um, another key takeaway, uh, the increase in short-term rentals has been accompanied by a decrease in conventional rentals available in the city. Um, so less maybe long-term rentals, uh, available. Um, some evidence is suggesting that, uh, some owners, maybe instead of selling their home, uh, if they leave, maybe they're actually, uh, holding on to them and keeping them, uh, as a short-term rental, uh, property. Uh, kind of an interesting, uh, market trend here, uh, is revenues from short-term rentals, uh, in Sagatuck easily. And again, this is just looking at the mortgage. We know there's a lot of other inputs, uh, when it comes to operating a short-term rental. But if you're strictly looking at your mortgage payment, um, the revenue from a short-term rental certainly can cover, uh, that, that, that mortgage payment. However, uh, the gap is decreasing. And so short-term rentals, uh, are potentially becoming less profitable and, and potentially the market may have an impact on the number of short-term rentals going forward. And then owning a short-term rental in Sagatuck is far more lucrative than owning a conventional rental. Um, so if you wanted to offer your, your home or property for, for long-term renting, uh, like, you're gonna make less than if you were, uh, to use it as a short-term rental property. So the Short Term Rental Task Force, uh, took a look at various forms of data and the data that's included in the report, um, kind of narrows in on residential zoning districts. It's kind of where the task force ended up as far as focusing, um, uh, their, their, um, uh, recommendations, especially as it related to a discussion potentially around, um, uh, caps. And we'll, we'll touch on that, that recommendation, um, later on. Um, I, I just checked a, a couple of days ago, the city's at about two hundred and seventy-five, uh, short-term rental certificates as a whole that, that includes, uh, residential zoning districts and commercial zoning districts. Um, but as of, you know, a few months ago, as we looked at just residential zoning districts, we took a look at which, uh, parcels are, are classified by the city assessor as either, uh, residential improved or, um, a residential condominium. So we took out any parcels that were vacant. Um, we kind of just tried to look at which parcels actually have housing units on them. And then we took a look at how many of those parcels had at least one short-term rental on, on them. Uh, knowing that, um, some parcels may have two short-term rental certificates, such as a, a home, uh, that has maybe an accessory dwelling unit. May have two short-term rental certificates. But for purposes of determining, um, how many parcels at least have a short-term rental compared to how many, uh, residential parcels are in a particular district? Uh, this chart kind of gives you a kind of a breakdown of how many parcels are being used, at least some of the time, as a, as a short-term rental, um, in, in our residential zoning districts. Uh, and the percentage is varying, uh, which is, which is kind of interesting. And, and, uh, this will be some data certainly, I think, to come back to as, as the discussion continues. So the Short Term Rental Task Force, uh, took very seriously the, you know, the, uh, recognize the importance of doing, uh, community engagement. Um, and one of the forms of community engagement that the, the task force did was, uh, conducting a, a, a town hall. Um, the task force, um, asked that a postcard be sent out to, uh, to, to, to property owners in the city, which was sent out letting folks know about the town hall, and then we certainly promoted it. Uh, and we had a good turnout. We had, uh, a little over a hundred folks that actually, uh, came in person to attend the town hall. Um, and then we had two parts to the town hall. We kind of had an open house style where folks were able to talk with different task force members and then kind of, uh, write some different comments down on message boards. Uh, and then the task force actually held a maybe more traditional town hall where they, uh, were sat and listened to folks kind of come up to a microphone and, and express their, their views. And so kind of some, some key notes, uh, that McKenna noted as far as maybe potential trends that they were seeing in the comments. Um, that included short-term rentals provide, uh, tourism opportunities and housing, which increased spending at local businesses. That was a common feeling amongst, uh, folks that participated. Uh, that there seemed to be kind of a lack of understanding maybe what a good neighbor policy is. And so that we, we have some work to do on letting folks know like what that is and how that may be beneficial. Um, participants, uh, were seeking increased enforcement, um, especially around those kind of nuisance-related issues such as noise and trash. Uh, a common theme that was really heard, not just at the town hall, but, but throughout, uh, public comments and certainly in the survey. Um, participants, uh, support reviewing the current fee schedule to make sure that, uh, you know, that the city's at least recouping its fees and costs of operating the short-term rental program and, and related enforcement. Um, the concentration of short-term rentals was perceived to reduce the neighborhood feel of residential areas. Um, folks that attended the town hall felt that short-term rentals should be classified as a business and not a residential use. So we kind of get into some of that, that tug and pull between residential uses and maybe more of a commercial use or commercial feel. And then further regulations should be reviewed for residential properties, but open up commercial areas for short-term rentals. So we saw at the town hall kind of a, a trend of, uh, focus on making recommendations around, uh, maybe more residential areas and, and the impact that they have on neighborhoods versus, uh, maybe less concern, uh, coming up related to commercial zoning districts. Short Terminal Task Force also, uh, conducted a survey, um, and, and really had, uh, a really good solid response to that survey. In total, uh, six hundred and twenty-six responses were received. Uh, one concern that was, uh, flagged, uh, from folks was that, you know, what's gonna stop somebody from maybe submitted, you know, duplicate responses? And so I'm kind of, I was able to actually look at IP addresses and at least try to, to deal with that particular issue. And so there was five responses that were flagged as, as being maybe excessive or beyond what, uh, you would expect to see in this type of a survey. And so five responses were removed, but in the end, six hundred and twenty-one responses of those that responded to, to the survey, there were two hundred and forty-two responses from those that identified as full-time or primary home residents. Uh, two hundred and forty identified as a part-time or second home resident. And then there were a hundred and thirty-two folks that took the, uh, survey as, uh, a non-resident. And just to give you a kind of a breakdown of, uh, where folks maybe identified, uh, as, uh, if they were a primary or secondary homeowner as, as far as, hey, you know, where, where do they identify as living? And so we had a hundred and sixty-eight responses from folks that said that they live on the hill. We had a hundred and twenty-two from folks that, that lived downtown. Uh, and then, uh, you can see the breakdown there, about a hundred for the north or east side of the river and then seventy-six, uh, or peninsula, um, or west of the river. Some key takeaways, uh, from the survey data, I think, again, some common theme that we ended up seeing was that, uh, folks felt that there were some benefits to having short-term rentals in the community, that they support tourism and business. Um, and that there's an increase in, in tax base. So that was kind of a shared opinion by both full-time and part-time residents. Um, but part-time residents tended to agree with these, uh, comments at a higher rate than the full-time residents. Um, non-residents selected that short-term rentals allow homeowners to increase their incomes as a top benefit of short-term rentals. Um, everyone essentially identified, you know, those nuisance issues, again, noise, parking, um, trash, kind of a lack of, and the, a lack of enforcement was a concern of folks that took the survey. Um, and then everybody really had an agreement that really there should be strength in regulations and enforcement around those nuisance-related issues. Um, another key takeaway from the survey was that full-time residents were more in favor of placing some sort of cap on short-term rentals, whereas part-time residents, uh, oppose such a policy change. And so I will get into, uh, kind of the, the cap details a little bit further on in the, the presentation. Oh, the, the Short Terminal Task Force took all of the information that they had heard, uh, over several months and, and then kind of, uh, focused on, uh, and had a discussion on, you know, what, what are our actual objectives? What do we want to base our recommendations, uh, around? Uh, what are we trying to solve for? Uh, the, the task force landed on really, uh, three objectives. The first was to aid and support the city of Sagatuck's tourism industry. Uh, there were full agreement on that. Uh, the task force felt that, uh, they should preserve the character of Sagatuck by enhancing the small-town feel and that we should effectively enforce short-term rental regulated ordinances. And so based on these objectives, the Short Terminal Task Force, uh, developed, um, some really good solid recommendations for both you as planning commissioners and then, uh, some are also gonna kind of fall on maybe more of a police powers ordinance or, or city council policy decision side of things. And so we're gonna kind of go through each of those, uh, particular, uh, sections. So the task force recommended that there be some sort of informational campaign pertaining to regulations on short-term rentals, really letting folks know, um, what, what are the rules, uh, what are the regulations? So they suggested that we, uh, create, uh, maybe a section on our website where we have frequently asked questions, where we provide, uh, more details on the policy, uh, provide ways for folks to perhaps interact with, with city staff, um, that, and, uh, maybe see contact information for short-term rental owners or, um, have a way to, to express maybe complaints. Um, task force also recommended that the, uh, city look at developing a, a good neighbor guide. Uh, again, a guide that would, um, hopefully, uh, help, uh, property owners as well as folks that may be using, using a short-term rental to and kind of reminding them of, of the rules, um, and, and, and trying to reduce some of those nuisance issues. Letting folks know, hey, here's kind of the, the hours that the community expects to see noise reduced, uh, or at a minimum or, or not having noise issues at all. Um, here's how the community expects, uh, you know, trash, uh, to be taken care of in short-term rentals. Um, here's, uh, who potentially you can call if there's an issue with your short-term rental or if you're having a, a concern about, uh, a short-term rental issue. Um, something to, um, kind of, uh, you know, guide all of us, uh, in being better or, or, or good neighbors to one another. One of the top things that the, the task force certainly, uh, kept hearing, um, you know, from folks is really concerns with, uh, noise. Um, and so the task force is recommending that the city council review the existing noise ordinance and determine if there's maybe an increase in the time of what maybe perhaps quiet hours are appropriate. Um, the, the, the noise ordinance in the city hasn't been updated in quite some time. Uh, I know our, our legal counsel is also, um, kind of flagged, uh, that there's maybe some, some updated language that we could, uh, incorporate, especially as it relates to maybe some, uh, different court cases that have come down to really strengthen the noise ordinance that we have. Uh, the second recommendation related to noise, uh, kind of relates to you as planning commissioners. They, they encouraged, uh, maybe potentially looking at ways, uh, to create, um, um, some noise limitations maybe in the, uh, zoning ordinance in residential zoning districts to kind of deal with, uh, certain types of, uh, nuisance, uh, noise activities. Uh, so fire safety was another, um, uh, a big focus of, uh, the task force. Uh, in fact, the, uh, we, the task force asked, uh, staff to reach out to the, um, the fire department and, and, and ask the fire department, hey, you know, you, you've been involved with, uh, inspecting and, and, uh, uh, dealing with short-term rentals for a number of years now, um, you know, what, what are you seeing? What, what would you recommend? And so, uh, Chief Janik and Deputy Chief Mantles, uh, came actually to a short-term rental task force meeting. Uh, they prepared a, a formal set of recommendations that is listed as an appendix in the actual short-term rental task force report. Um, uh, so everybody's able to see those. But essentially, the task force, uh, based on the feedback that was provided by the fire department, uh, adopted all of the fire department's recommendations. So the first recommendation, um, was to, was a request that the Sagatuck Fire Department transitioned to, uh, annual inspections. As you probably recall, we're doing inspections every three years now. The fire department was recommending that we switch to doing annual inspections of all short-term rental units. Uh, and the task force adopted that, that recommendation and felt that that was something that, uh, if the resources were there, uh, and we had the staffing, or the fire department had the staffing to do it, that, uh, the best thing to do would be to have annual inspections of each short-term rental unit. Second recommendation was to explore reducing the occupancy limits, uh, in short-term rental units. So right now, the, the fire department uses the, the Boca Property Maintenance Code, um, which essentially allows for two persons per room and, and, and two people per floor and how they calculate, um, uh, occupancy limits for short-term rentals. And, and the fire department kind of, uh, you know, uh, listed some concerns related to, uh, much larger homes are now being built and that there are, um, certain homes that, that could have, uh, sixteen, eighteen, uh, folks, you know, in one short-term rental unit. Um, and, and that really raised a lot of red flags and concerns for the fire department and, and how they would, um, uh, manage a fire uh, at, at a home that large, having that many people in it, and how they would have challenges getting people out, um, if there were that many people, um, in, um, a short-term rental unit. And so their recommendation, which was adopted by the Short Term Rental Task Force, was to, um, reduce occupancy to two persons per room, uh, and then not allowing any more than twelve persons per short-term rental dwelling. Um, so, um, having kind of a, a max cap. Um, certainly, if, if you, you know, had less bedrooms than that, you would, would have to have less than that twelve. Twelve would be the absolute max. The third recommendation was to, um, uh, encourage collaboration between the city of Sagatuck, the city of the village of Douglas, and Sagatuck Township to ensure the rental, uh, ordinances, fee structures, and programs marry each other. Um, so something that the, I know the, the fire department has worked on for a number of years. Uh, I think it's had good success with getting things to align in each of the communities. So that way, if, if, if property owners are, are operating a short-term rental and, and each of the communities or you're a rental agent and you're managing short-term rentals in each, um, community, that, that you really have similar, um, uh, rules and regulations. Um, and, and, and that hopefully will help, uh, uh, the greater tri community as we work together on that. Fourth recommendation was to really reduce the, um, kind of that, that rental agent or property or, or person that may be responsive for that property from being forty-five miles away down to fifteen miles, uh, away. Um, and then making sure that it's clear that that, that responding party really should be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So a really a reduction in how far away that, that person should be. The fifth recommendation was to encourage regulating short-term or long-term rentals identically, um, or in a similar manner. Right now, we don't have like a, 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 a registration process, at least on the, the city side for, you know, long-term rentals. Uh, right now, it's focused on just short-term rentals. The recommendation was to look at having a similar program for, uh, long-term rentals and, and regulating them similarly. Sixth recommendation was to require the short-term rental certificate to be posted, uh, in a window, uh, visible, uh, from the public roadway in order to identify the property as having been issued a permit to operate, uh, a short-term rental. And so this kind of gets into some of the, uh, concern that, that some folks have, that there's, there's folks who are operating short-term rentals and perhaps, uh, hasn't been registered with the city. They haven't received the proper safety inspections from the fire department. Um, this would help folks know that, hey, that, that, that home that, uh, I know to be a short-term rental is actually registered. They have a set occupancy and they've actually been inspected. First recommendation was to encourage the review of, um, assessing monetary fines and fees to property owners who are in violation of our ordinances. And so, uh, we, we do currently have, uh, uh, fines established by the city council in our code of ordinances. Um, but, you know, this recommendation kind of aligned with, uh, other thoughts that the task force, um, discussed was that, you know, those fees probably should be, be reviewed, um, and, um, where there's, uh, costs that are greater to the city in enforcing its regulations, that those fines should be increased, um, and, and, uh, uh, applied maybe at a higher rate than what they are, uh, currently. Um, and, and really to, to hopefully deter folks from, um, um, violations. Uh, recommendation eight was to review the existing fire district fee schedule and recommend amendments were applicable. And I, I think that the fire district is looking at, um, are they actually recouping their costs and what they charge the city for inspection? So right now, every short-term rental, uh, uh, owner, when they apply for their short-term rental certificate, they pay three hundred and fifty dollars and that's, that's, that's for the full three-year certificate. And then the fire district, uh, after they conduct an inspection, they charge the city then a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the fire district is looking at, um, and making sure that they actually are recouping their actual costs of their staff, uh, going out, doing the inspection, uh, typing up the paperwork, uh, maintaining the records, the software that it takes, the, you know, time it takes to drive. Uh, all those costs that are kind of inputs and, and, and making sure that, that cost, um, is, is recouped. Recommendation nine was required documentation from the short-term rental property insurance company identifying and acknowledging the property is insured as a, as a rental dwelling. Um, like a good recommendation there. Um, recommendation ten was to acknowledge that the short-term rental properties were originally built and issued certificates of occupancy as single-family. Was to acknowledge that the short-term rental properties were originally built and issued certificates of occupancy as single-family dwellings under the Michigan Residential Code. So the the fire department really kind of raised some concerns about um. You know, we a home, you know, built for a single-family purpose um. Uh it's really a different use and uh has a different uh maybe intensity of use than. Um a short-term rental property that that maybe is going to have a higher occupancy um or transient occupancy and. And looking at ways that maybe that that can be uh addressed. Trash. Trash was another uh concern that that came up uh both in public comments uh uh in the survey and certainly during the town hall. So the task force is recommending that the planning commission explore modifying the short-term rental ordinance to. Uh really increase the number of uh trash receptacles or containers that are required for short-term rental properties. Uh to actually uh have it maybe be based on the occupancy level for the short-term rental unit. Um recommendation two is encourage the city administration to review uh the existing trash and recycling policies to determine if additional pickups from the waste hour are warranted. Uh so some folks mentioned concerns about, you know, once a week pickup or. Uh once a month pickup for uh recycling and and are there opportunities to uh increase um, you know, the maybe the frequency when trash is actually uh collected. Uh to to cut down on on trash concerns um. Yeah, three is related to two. So recommendation four was to encourage the city administration to review the existing uh recycling policies to determine maybe the. The additional pickups aren't all year long, uh recognizing that that maybe there's a there's obviously a peak season. Uh when when trash is maybe at a higher volume. And so looking at maybe uh having an increased pickup during this maybe tourist month such as May to September. All right, so uh enforcement was certainly a a common uh recommendation and and common discussion point amongst the uh task force members. So. Uh the recommendation of the task force was to encourage the city administration to explore hiring uh. Somebody that's dedicated, uh whether it's part-time, full-time. Somebody that's really dedicated to be able to respond to specific uh uh comments arising from uh noise, trash, occupancy or other. Uh violations of the short-term rental ordinance or really other ordinances in general. I think there was a common. Uh theme that folks really want to see greater enforcement and and uh hope that uh resources are provided to uh provide that greater enforcement. Kind of some general modifications that the the task force recommended. Uh the first was to encourage the creation of a short-term rental registration public database. So uh right now, the city, uh you know, we we collect obviously who the the owner is and and who the agent or responsible party is for the uh short-term rental property. And so the task force was recommending that we. Uh find a way to make that information more publicly available to where um you know, perhaps residents or neighbors could. Uh maybe more directly talk to uh the responsible party or rental agent themselves and and address uh issues that they're maybe having with a a a short-term rental that's that's near them. Um the second recommendation was to encourage the creation of a general call-in line, which residents may leave uh non non-time sensitive concerns with city officials. And so. Um is there, you know, encouraging some specific way for folks to uh let the city know about issues that they're that they're having. Um and the key there is is really uh you know, non-time sensitive concerns. Um you know. Part of that, maybe that public education campaign that was recommended really will have to be. That if folks are having uh nuisance-related concerns with with noise, for example, it's really best that. Um the shares department um probably be contacted when that noise is occurring to to actively address it. Um it's really difficult to to deal with the noise issues, you know, after the fact. Um or when uh maybe city staff is coming in the next day and aren't able to maybe gather the the evidence that's needed for uh some of the enforcement. Uh recommendation three was to encourage the city administration to review areas within the residential districts in which no parking. This side of the street could be installed to aid aid an emergency uh service access. So. This is kind of an issue that 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 came up in the task force process and is up is come up by notice city council as well, that there's certain streets that are. narrower than traditional streets and that um right now, there's certain streets where because of the. Not just short-term rentals, but even maybe day trippers um. There's people parking on both sides of the street and you really can't get emergency uh vehicles to access those properties if they were to need it. And so. Um there's been some initial work done on this by uh the city administration and our city engineer, um but the task force is recommending that we actually look at um. Implementing some no parking signage in on those narrower streets. Uh fourth recommendation was to encourage the city administration to review the ability to revoke a certificate. Um so this was a recommendation that if. If there's a particular short-term rental owner that um you know, they're just not managing their property. Uh in in accordance with the regulations, there's there's consistent, you know, confirmed complaints, having a way to actually uh potentially revoke. Uh that that certificate. Uh recommendation five was to request that the city administration review the feasibility of requiring short-term route property owners to actually post their certificate number in their listing. Um so this was something that uh again, it's kind of getting at making sure that folks that um. Uh kind of dealing with uh maybe potential properties that are going under the radar, they're not actually registering, they're not getting that safety inspection. What's another way that we can uh make sure as we're trying to enforce the ordinance that that actual property is registered as a short-term rental with the city? And so. The city, when we issue a short-term rental certificate, actually, we do issue a specific certificate number to that. Uh short-term rental um that that number would actually have to be listed on an actual uh listing, uh online listing. Uh recommendation six was to request that the city administration explore hiring a a third party uh to support the city in managing its short-term rental program. Um so there's been some um. There's different third-party uh providers out there that um can assist with. Uh anything from identifying short-term rentals that may not be uh registered with with the city. Uh to programs that actually will manage all of your uh short-term rental registration and certificate issuance, handling all complaints. Uh or enforcement. Um there's some platforms that also offer a a call-in option to where. Um anybody could call a a one-eight-hundred number um and specifically bring up a concern about a short-term rental uh in the city of Sagatuck. And then that that company actually has the ability to then like real-time message with a short-term rental. Uh uh agents or person that's responsible for the property to try to rectify the issue. Well, those were the recommendations of the task force. Um one thing that that certainly got had a lot of discussion um um amongst the task force members and then. Was really asked during the public engagement sessions in both the town hall and the short-term rental survey was. Whether or not there should be some sort of um caps implemented on short-term rentals in the city. Um and so the. The survey results uh from the community um. Pretty clearly showed that a citywide cap, um you know, a cap on on the entire city residential and zoning districts was not something. I'm sorry, residential and commercial zoning districts was not over was not overwhelmingly supported by those who responded um. We saw a little bit of a difference uh was when we looked at and asked questions about, would you be. Is a cap something that you would support in a maybe a particular residential uh zoning district or neighborhood? Full-time residents uh were showing uh an interest in seeing a cap on short-term rentals in certain neighborhoods. Whereas, you know, your part-time residents uh or are indicating uh that they're opposed to such a policy change. And so the the two charts to your right kind of. Show that data, the top chart uh shows um what part-time residents felt about a potential cap in residential zoning districts. And you can see, you know, the overall totals there as well as the. Information broken down by uh particular neighborhoods or areas of residential areas of the city. Uh and then the bottom chart shows you what how felt full-time residents uh felt about a potential cap. In residential zoning districts. And so ultimately, the the task force, they they spent several meetings uh discussing this issue and kind of wrestling with this topic. And and ultimately, the 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 task force. Did have consensus that they did not support a citywide cap on short-term rentals. Uh or some sort of lottery system. Uh they they all agreed uh on that, that there shouldn't be a a cap uh across the entire city. Where there was some split uh was was is it related to uh a cap on residential zones or neighborhoods within the city? Some. Task force members felt very strongly uh that that. Is that the city should seek to impose a cap uh or limit in residential zones or neighborhoods. Whereas um others on the task force felt this is strongly that there shouldn't be uh a cap uh placed at this time. And and some felt that. We really should kind of uh look at maybe better enforcement or placing, uh you know, following through on some of the recommendations from the task force. Um and kind of seeing and and felt that that would have a better uh impact on some of the concerns that that folks were bringing forth. Um another kind of uh in interesting discussion amongst the task force was, you know, um. How do we, you know, view the data uh from the surveys and the town hall and the the public comments, you know, who should we give more weight to full-time residents? Uh or should we give uh equal weight to full-time, part-time and non-residents? And so that was something that they weren't ultimately able to. Uh agree on. And so if it relates to short-term rental caps, uh the task force acknowledged that that further review and analysis of instituting a cap on the number of short-term rentals may be required. Uh but the consensus really was that there's no definitive direction uh on caps achieved, at least from the task force. So as I conclude here, at least with the presentation portion, and then happy to answer uh any questions and see uh what uh your your task force chair would like to add uh as well. But. Want to give a big thank you to the McKenna Associates Planning Firm. Uh they have, you know, a deep bench, a lot of folks that that has uh worked on this. They were at each of the. The task force meetings, you know, uh they're all message message or yeah, message boards for the town hall. Uh you know, put together the survey, uh we're evaluating all kinds of data. They did a a lot of work and analysis for the task force, really appreciate their work and. Uh I really want to send a huge thank you to the task force members. Uh they gave up, you know, uh two afternoons um uh each summer month. Um and and then on top of that, other, you know, probably countless other hours reviewing meeting packets and analysis, um you know, talking to constituents, talking to stakeholders. Gathering feedback and then really also having a really robust discussion. Everybody in the task force that they indicated that they. Um had learned some different things, that there were certain things that they had heard that they changed their mind on throughout the process. Um they were all very respectful to one another and having um, you know, really productive dialogue and and coming. Uh forth with a report with their recommendations. So really want to thank them for their their great work. So as we look at next steps, again, tonight's really meant to be uh a presentation on the task force recommendations. Uh the full report is in your packet. So we kind of want to give you as a a planning commission. Uh an opportunity to 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 digest, have the community and give the community a chance to digest. Uh we're gonna do the same presentation to the city council on November eighth. Um to make sure that they're aware and give the public another opportunity to also hear about the task force work and recommendations. Uh and then really at your next planning commission meeting on November sixteenth is where we plan on picking up the discussion. Uh to hear from you as a full planning commission on what um uh recommendations you would like to take up. If there's other things that 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 you think uh we need to dive further into and then and then kind of go from there. So. Uh Mr. Chair, that is all I have. And perhaps maybe we could turn it over to the task force chair to uh see if she has anything that she would like to add.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Great, great job, Ryan. Um just a couple of things to add. Uh one, I think it's pretty clear going through all of the recommendations that the devil will be in the details. I think. You know, some great recommendations from the task force. Um but it's gonna, you know, this is still early stages in terms of where we land. Um one thing that I have felt found helpful as I think through all of this is looking at sort of the different categories. Um that we're trying to address. And obviously, safety is one of them. Um nuisances are another. Enforcement in government, uh governance. Um so the governments, the registration, all of that, as well as um. Enforcement. And then finally, neighborhood density. And I think the task force did a phenomenal job. Um coming to consensus on those first four things, some great ideas for what we might do. Um caps obviously are is what would get to neighborhood density. And so that's a big. Chunk, especially in the residences, in the residential neighborhoods and and really figuring out how to address that. Um. Data is another area that I think will be really critical. Um and it's way more complicated than I ever thought it could be. Um I think we have a really good set of um of the residential data that Ryan presented. I think making sure that we really spend time. Nailing down sort of what our methodology is, whether we're measuring parcels or dwelling units. And then. If we can, you know, tick and tie every single license to a place and it it that's not so hard on the residential side, but in the commercial districts. Um I I personally believe that that would be um helpful to just have a really solid benchmark data uh to work from. Um Ryan mentioned sort of full-time residents, part-time residents. How do we um weigh stakeholders differing points of view? Um I think also, and I think we've talked about this. I know we did in the task force, but how are we going to phase the changes? Because obviously, we can't just do all of this and flip a switch. So I think having a um sort of a end-to-end um phased approach that's logical in some format. And then being able to communicate that both holistically, but then in the piece parts. To the community um will be really important. And then, you know, in addition to the website. Ways to really get out and and communicate all of this to, you know, the people, the license holders, residents, visitors um alike. So um the other thing is, um one thing we had hoped to get but didn't get. Um was how how other communities who have implemented caps, um what has their experience been? Um so earlier this month, um I called the planning director in Charlotte Boy to ask him, because they put in a cap uh three. Years ago. And so they have some good data on how that worked. Um it very helpful, smart guy. Um they're actually to the point now where they're tweaking some of theirs and and their cap is residential only. Um and you know, by his, I mean, they've had some great experience. So he has offered to meet with us if we're interested. Meet with city council. Um and again, this isn't a task force recommendation, because I didn't want to get into the. Uh you know, McKenna was running the the show. Um but I do think that they might be a valuable resource and we could probably also do a little bit more digging on, especially around caps. What's happened in communities that have um implemented them. So again, like Brian said, great job um of the task force. It was an an amazing group. And I think everyone. Really respected and listened to one another, which was awesome. And also a great job of city staff um for supporting us throughout. So, thank you.
Thank you, Holly, and thank you, Ryan, city staff, everyone who's involved with it. Ryan, one question that I will ask. For our November sixteenth meeting, if we went through all the recommendations, would you? You know, working with my myself, Holly, uh be able to kind of break down. Each recommendation as to whether it's a city administrative function. A police power function or something that the planning commission, so we can kind of identify. Which ones would really be more related to the planning commission and zoning? And which ones are going to be handled by the city administrator or go directly maybe to city council? That might be helpful to, you know, as part of the guidance for our November sixteenth uh agenda.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, absolutely.
Okay, with that, I think that would conclude. The new business of the short-term rental presentation, which then takes us to the public comment section for the special. Meeting. If you would like to come up and give any comments in regards to. You know, you heard today or anything, you you're welcome to come up to the microphone or raise your hand online. Give us your name, your address, and limit any comments to three minutes or less. We'll start here in the room. Is there anyone who would like to come up and address? The planning commission at this time.
Mark Klingle, seven forty-seven Water Street. Uh I want to thank the whole task force for um doing such a job of reaching out. They they got a lot of involvement from a lot of people. That's one of the great things that happened here. Uh I have to really extend a thanks to Lauren Stanton, who made it clear that all the property owners would be allowed to participate in the survey. She made that real clear. And then. Another thanks to Steve Mans, who made sure that they all counted. Because there was an effort to discount the residents and not the non-residents. So all the property owners were represented in this. Uh they staged, you know, spoke spoke their um position. Uh of that, there is a a number of things that have been kind of left off the report. The report's really tilted heavily to caps. When the survey voted against caps and the task force. Uh eighty percent was against caps. So um. We're we're talking about caps when everybody kind of pushed it aside and said, not now, let's look at that some other time. Uh the other issue with the the um report is the the fire department came in at the very last minute with their input. It wasn't discussed by the task force. Um the why you basically, the stakeholders had no input or had no chance to really discuss or give input on it. Um while it's got a lot of great things, it's got a lot of things that are just going to add a lot of cost and really give. While it's got a lot of great things, it's got a lot of things that are just going to add a lot of cost and really give us no improvement in safety or other issues. The other thing in there is our consultant group, while they put a lot of effort in, they they didn't have the ability to generate accurate data. The data that's in this report, we tried to correct it at the meetings, but this report has very tilted data in it when it comes to the income for the vacation rental properties and their the income basically on the rental properties of non vacation rentals, the long term rentals. That information is hundreds of percents off both directions. So and that really tilts the information of, you know, do do the, can you pay for a vacation rental based on we have a hundred day season? They're saying we have a two hundred and twelve day season, which isn't true. You can't pay for a vacation rental mortgage based on the length of season we have here. You can make it a dent in it and pay a large portion of it, but you can't do that. So those are the input. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And thanks for attending some of the meetings.
Okay, Jane Underwood, one thirty Perryman Street. Steve, were you waiting for me to get up? Yeah, you just gave me a smile and a few others too. Okay, again, I would like to thank the task force for doing probably a thankless job. And probably taking some questions, comments. Maybe even a little anger from some people. People on the task force were a wide ranging group. I think I would have preferred if everyone was actually a resident of the city of Sagatuck. And I would also like to say it's the residents full time who live here have to deal with the problems created by a number of the short term rentals. It's not the people who live, whatever. It's those of us who live here. And I've been noticing just along Park Street huge numbers of cars in the last couple of weekends. Now, I don't know if these are all going to the weddings. Even the Beachway has had people during the week and I don't remember that. And I've been here a long time. I've lived here full time since two thousand. So again, I hope the task force, the planning and the city council will remember the people who live here and the people who vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online who would like to speak? I'm sorry about that.
Dan Fox, city of Sagatuck. Just a a couple of brief things. I got a message, I think this week from Chief Janik after I had sent him the the report. And he was highly complimentary. He said, I'm paraphrasing, but I think he said he'd never seen as complete and well structured and well presented such a report. And that's not just about things like this, but other stuff. So I wanted to convey that to you. It is also my impression. And even though the chief and I don't always agree on everything, we do agree on that. You mentioned, and I can't click them off, the four areas, whatever, you'll remember them, I'm sure. I would add to those four a fifth. And that is figuring out the costs. Because in my mind, that dictates a number of things and closes off some avenues, maybe add some, I'm not so sure. But and 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 without without being directed on this, the comment, earlier comment about the fire district's recommendations, I find not a single one of those recommendations not right on point. We are losing money. We are transferring the expense of maintaining safety in short term rentals to the entire tax base. And it's a big number. And it'll be a bigger number because we need more people to do that if this goes to once a year. Those people are not, it can't be just hired off the street. There are certifications required. I mean, we go through this all the time with the district meetings. So cost is a is a big deal. Will will some of those recommendations add costs? You bet your life. I would expect that there are other recommendations that'll come out of this that are going to add costs. Those are not, it shouldn't be looked at as incremental costs. Those should be looked at as a fair allocation of worthwhile costs that need to be put against that that base of the of our universe. So thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online, please raise your hand if you would like to make public comments. I see Doug, if you would like to.
Yeah, thank you very much. I I just want to echo what Dan just said. I thought the fire department portion was actually the strongest of the report out. I found a lot of the other recommendations just interesting, but not really addressing the larger challenge that I thought was actually put in from the task force. And with five, six of the task force that were not city council members having some sort of business associated with or having business associated with short term rentals or real estate. I don't think it's too surprising where the outcome ended up. But I I I'm happy to hear that there's ongoing conversations around what the city should do to assist the full time residents that do it, you know, live with us on a daily annual basis now. And the last comment, just from the first first individual who spoke, there's obviously profit in these short term rentals. Or there wouldn't be just people buying houses and never even using them. And I think that as a resident, we're very happy to have part term residents here. We love them. We are friends with them. We live with them. They're great. I think the bigger challenge and and I think the task force did a nice job kind of separating out are the ones that are just being used commercially. They're being owned by people that never come here, that never participate or add value to the city. And as Dan said, we're paying for that. We're administrating those properties. We're the ones calling the police on them. It's our fire department that's actually, you know, incurring that cost. And and I I hope that the ultimate recommendations take that into account. So thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Anyone else online? Raise your hands. Okay, seeing none, we will close out the public comment section, which concludes our special meeting for the planning commission. If I have any member who would like to call for adjournment? Have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, you close the special meeting and you all have two minutes to go to the restroom before the seven o'clock meeting starts.